On to order, by due allegiance. By due allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, it's a good republic for which it stands.
Why nation, under God.
In the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, roll call, Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Autry.
Here.
Commissioner Devlin.
Present.
Commissioner O.
Present.
And Peter O'Brien is here. Special presentations and or announcements. This time slot is for informational presentations. Appointments or rewards to presented by the planning commission or to the planning commission.
We have no special presentation scheduled for tonight.
Public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited at all planning commission meetings regarding issues or matters not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the planning commission of Waireka. If your comments concern an item noted on the agenda, please address the planning commission when that item is open for public comment. Consider request that persons addressing the planning commission refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Planning commissioners, when recognized by the chair, may ask clarifying questions of presenter, but no action may be taken by the planning commission during the public comments section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the planning commission is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the planning commission or matters listed on the consent agenda, as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing, old or new business sections of the agenda, please address the commission when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. State your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the commissioners as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become a public record. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Since the planning commission is unable to take action on issues not of the, not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff or follow-up or be placed on a future agenda. Public comments period is not intended to be a question, an answer period, or conversations with the planning commission or city staff. Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the, any member of the planning commission wishes to remove an item.
I apologize, Peter, could, could you just open and ask for general public comment?
Ah, I beg your pardon.
It's okay.
Do we have any general comments? No, we do.
Thank you.
Blazed over that.
It's okay. You got a script now.
Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Recommended planning commission action, motion to adopt the consent agenda of the planning commission of the city of Waireka as presented. Do I have a motion?
I will be able to vote.
So you, you can just recuse yourself or abstain from voting when the vote is taken?
Do I have a motion?
I have a question. Since I was not there, I didn't have the information. Shouldn't I refuse myself?
So you may choose to abstain as well, but if you were not in attendance, you may still vote in favor of the minutes if you feel they reflect the record that occurred. So you are allowed to do that if you would like, but if you feel more comfortable abstaining, you may also do so.
So a motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as.
My second. And my. So the hearing is. The approval of minutes of the regular meeting. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then request for abstentions?
Request for abstentions.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Public hearing, no. All business, no. New business. General Plan Twenty Forty-four Draft Vision Statement and Guiding Principles. The planning commission will consider and discuss a presentation on the Twenty Forty-four Visioning Public Engagement and input on the draft visioning statement and guiding principles for the general plan update.
Right. Thank you. So. Uh, we're finally back on track for the general plan updates now that we have a little bit more staff capacity. So, uh, we're coming back to you with kind of an, an initial summary of our visioning workshops that we did in the early summer, late spring. Um, if you'll remember, we canceled our May meeting to have the visioning workshop and have that exercise. We also had some, uh, school outreach and we wanted to also do some additional outreach to populations that weren't as well represented in the surveying data, uh, just to make sure we had a good swath of the type of people who live in the community who are weighing in. And so this is part of our comprehensive, uh, general plan document. And so the cities, this is the city's guiding planning document that addresses state mandated topics as well as other topics that are important to the community. And out of this document, you're required to have goals, policies, and programs. And so goals are the overarching piece, and then you have policies and programs to implement those under that. But an important part of this process that has taken us the most time, because, uh, the city of Waireka has not historically had a vision. Um, we develop a vision as the beginning process of this to act as kind of a, a filter for the planning department. So we are required to cover state mandated topics like land use, transportation, solid waste, and all of those other items. But how you as a community choose to address those items is really reliant upon the vision that you have for the future. And so the nice thing about this item is I don't intend anybody to make a, a decision tonight. Um, what we did was we summarized the data that we've gotten so far, tried to find common themes uh, and things that have occurred repeatedly throughout the data. Um, we are still processing some of the intergenerational exercise. And so we may have a couple of refinements, but there's a pretty clear, uh, core five areas that we'll go over. And so if you could please go to the next slide. So just a quick review of vision statements are positive. They're very forward-thinking. They determine the direction in which we go for future projects and planning programs. Uh, we'll give you some examples of, of those here. Um, so for example, the city of Fort Bragg is really into a strong sense of community, natural beauty, public facilities, safe streets. Um, other places like Fairfax, Virginia want to really invest in innovation and sustainability. And so these vision statements are unique to your community. There is no state mandate for what you include in that vision statement. So this is really all up to you. It's one of the rare times that you don't have a state mandate that you have to meet with this. And then with, after that visioning statement starts to flush out, we do what's called a, a list of guiding principles that we use to evaluate and that we use as we go through the document. And we'll give you a couple of examples of those. And again, this is a visioning statement for the next twenty years. And so when we get to that, you'll see it's a little bit more broad. You know, we can go into specifics if there's something very important that you feel is coming out of the input or you feel needs to be in that twenty-year statement. But we do try to give some flexibility while still being very clear on what your intent is. And so this helps us go through and evaluate developments, planning programs, and grants. And it, and it helps us in the planning department, though, this fits the future of the city. This does not, because we've decided this is the direction we want to go. And so it's ultimately going to be your document with the city council. And so this will ultimately be up to your decision. And we will facilitate that as best as possible for you through the process. So the next slide, please. So building that vision statement, so we've done about ten total public opportunities. That includes the visioning survey, public workshops, and focus groups. Most of our focus groups were related to youth in the community. They're one of our fastest growing demographics for the community. We did decrease in age since the last census. And a lot of times we don't get a lot of youth engagement in our typical planning, uh, tools like a survey. Although we did have some individuals between the ages of fifteen and twenty-five participate in the survey. We wanted to make sure we were getting those core groups, um, that are going to be heavily impacted by a twenty-year vision. Um, ideally, again, you know, it's a very difficult thing personally to take yourself and go, okay, where am I going to be in twenty years? What are the things I'm going to be focused on? And, and trying to look at how that's going to impact everybody. And so we had those focus groups, the public workshops. And so we estimated about four hundred and fifty-two people were actually engaged through this entire process. And about forty percent of people at each event were new people. So there are some people who were double counted in that four hundred and fifty-two attendees, but we did try to keep track of how many people we noticed were new, which forty percent is very good. So these are new people who are, who are participating in a variety of different ways, which is always what we want to hit, is that, you know, not everybody is able to or wants to take a survey. But they did show up for the public workshops and they were engaged in the focus groups. And so, um, we're really happy with those numbers. Again, if the planning commission feels that you need additional public outreach, please let me know. We can definitely, uh, add to this as we go through the process. If you feel that you need a, a certain group's input or if you want to make sure that we have enough public input related to this. Next slide, please. And this one you'll have to click, but I'll let you know when I need them. So there were some common themes and topics that came out of all of this input. There's kind of five core areas people were concerned about and had input into. Housing is a, a main one, food, healthy community, uh, employment and education and energy. Surprisingly, that was one that was extremely common with the, um, high school group, uh, which was really fascinating conversations to have with them around that. Um, and food was another one that was kind of more youth-specific in terms of concerns. And so if you could please click the mouse for the first one. In terms of housing, the common themes that we had come out of housing was affordability, the variety of housing types. And then homeownership is something that came out as well. Uh, so again, engaging with a lot of the different types of groups. We had a lot of people who, um, were interested in some shorter-term goals of affordability and housing type. But, um, as you'll see in the next slide, uh, in the twenty-year long scheme of things, there's kind of this, um, really big push for homeownership and whatever that looks like, um, for people. So the next one is food. Uh, again, this one came out of a lot of people wanting to support our agricultural nature. Farmers markets is a very big thing that came out, supporting local agriculture movements. And then having enough healthy food was a concern that a lot of the youth had, as well as other members of our senior population, um, feeling as though they don't have enough access to healthy food options and especially having access to healthy food options within a walkable distance of where they're living. And so there are some food security issues that we do have in the community. One of the things we talk about is, I believe, I can't remember what the percentage is, but it's, it's in the upper eighties or ninety percent of our schoolchildren here are on free and reduced lunch because they are low-income and food insecure. And so we find that the input that we got along with some of the data that we have, you know, this is an issue facing the community that we need to develop or we suggest that you develop short-term and long-term goals to address. The next one is healthy community, and so you can click on that one. Um, you'll see here healthcare is bolded. Healthcare was probably the single most talked about item in the entire public outreach. Didn't really matter if it was youth. It didn't really matter if it was people in middle age or age demographic, socioeconomic, um, backgrounds, uh, different ethnicities. Everybody had comments about healthcare, whether it's increasing the options of healthcare here so that people do not have to go to Medford, um, increasing senior care options, increasing ADA, um, compliance and as well as assistive, uh, healthcare measures for that, making spaces more, um, open for people who are experiencing different health needs. Um, that is a huge thing that came out in almost nearly every single outreach event that we had, including the students, um, also had concerns over healthcare in the future. Um, there's also a very big push for expansion of Fairchild as well as primary, uh, care doctors. Um, those were two very specific ones. People want to see the hospital expand and have more services available to them. The other thing too is that it's a, a little bit more age, um, specific, but the younger generations typically those who are, you know, middle-aged and younger, so those who are forty-five and younger. And a lot of the input in the surveys, as well as in our, our high school and grade school outreach, mental health services was a piece of that healthcare pie, um, that people were really kind of concerned about how, how, how we're ingrading that into the community and what the options are for people to have mental healthcare services. Um, one of the specific factors that the high school students, as well as the grade school students brought up, was, um, access to drug rehabilitation and drug counseling services was a very large concern for them for the future. Um, safety came out, um, as, uh, homeless populations, that kind of goes into the housing piece as well, is addressing homelessness was a common topic. It, it ranged more on the short-term program side. People want to see quicker action on that issue related to safety, related to more housing availability, related to more mental health availability for those who are experiencing homelessness. Uh, recreation opportunities, outdoor, indoor entertainment, uh, was a very big thing. So that kind of ropes into social events as well. Um, especially people who were in the age demographic of twenty to about fifty-five, within that middle-aged, uh, demographic. Um, a lot of people were stating that there's just not enough for them to do. They usually have to go out of the community to be, be able to have social events. There's a very big push for more social groups and having more, uh, programming around parks and recreation to have more events in Green Horn, have more events that are scheduled in our parks for people to participate in. Um, the younger generations are looking to get outdoors more. Um, it was a very fascinating conversation around technology in a couple of the classes where they do want to continue to see support for outdoor recreation, if not more outdoor recreation. Hunting and fishing was kind of a minor theme, uh, within those options and supporting those pieces. Um, dirt bikes is all, as well as off-roading is a, a minor theme that came out of the younger demographic input within there. And then, uh, water security was also, uh, an item that came out of this. And so again, people are concerned about having water security ten to twenty years out into the future, having good quality water as well as having enough water. And that was echoed throughout all age demographics that we had throughout the process. The next one is employment and education. Um, a lot of it is around having good jobs, good-paying jobs, livable wage jobs. Um, and then a lot of it is around job diversity. So a lot of people really want to see blue-collar work, white-collar work, but really there's kind of a good vast array of job, uh, options that people want. A lot of the younger kids are looking more towards the healthcare industry. A lot of nursing students who are leaving and some of them do want to come back, some of them do not. Um, it was probably about sixty, forty, that sixty percent of the, the kids in the senior class do not want to come back to Waireka for some reason or another. Forty percent do want to come back or do plan to stay here. And so, uh, again, things change, but that's what they've got going for them on that one. We didn't really delve into the moving out piece with the other age demographics. It's a little bit more pertinent for the seniors at the high school, thinking about that back in May. Um, the other thing too is better education options, better childcare options, better schooling for pre-K through twelve was a big item that came out. Um, childcare being very expensive and not very accessible throughout the community came out. Um, and that can kind of get roped into the employment and education piece. We did have a couple of people at workshops who are newer parents who did not feel that they had enough support to be able to continue their, their dual income household. And so they felt that they just couldn't afford to do daycare and that it was cheaper for the person to quit their job or to put their job on hold. Um, but within the job diversity piece, there was a big push, um, those under the age of fifty-five within what we would consider the, the working age group. Um, very big push for remote work. And so the younger generation too was talking about they want to be travel nurses. They want to be able to travel and work. They want to be able to work from home. Um, internet services was a big piece of that too. Uh, and so really looking at that flexibility of work and flexibility of jobs and that the initial input out of the intergenerational, uh, exercise, we're seeing a lot of people talk about work flexibility or job movement, um, and, and promotion. Continuing education came out as kind of a minor theme in terms of people wanting more ability to change jobs later in life, which is, uh, kind of a different trend happening in employment right now where people are skipping through careers. They're not necessarily staying in the same career field. They're, they want to be able to either go welding or start their own business and they want to learn how to do that. And so there was a lot of support for bolstering the College of the Siskys as a long-term goal and then having those continuing education pieces as well for those in the aging population who want to stay active. They see it as a social thing. They see it as a self-enrichment piece. And so continuing education, um, would be kind of present throughout the community and the age groups there. Uh, in terms of, uh, employment or just economics in general, there is a strong support for increasing the tourism of the area, whether it be cultural, historical, or outdoor recreation-based. Those were the three main ones there. And then the other really fun one is energy is the final one. This is, this came out of the, more of the youth demographic, but they're very opinionated and very interested in vehicle fuel types. Uh, we had a very in-depth conversation about diesel vehicles versus hydrogen. And, um, there are a lot of opinions about alternative energy or other energy methods. I, I don't want to necessarily say completely renewable energy because California, how it defines renewable, it does not include hydro in renewable energy, which is different. Um, a lot of other states consider hydro renewable. And so vehicle fuel types, the future of the freight and mechanic industry is really huge on, on the minds of younger generations in terms of jobs and employment. Um, they're very sensitive to it. It's very fascinating. Um, and then new jobs in energy and future technologies, there's a lot of push for trades work. There's a lot of push for, um, I believe one of the kids was talking about becoming a solar contractor because there aren't a lot here. Um, but there's a lot of opportunity to build in the job market here around energy and future technology. Um, and again, we're talking about the electric, electric, electrification of the freight industry. And so we do not really have a lot of infrastructure for that type of industry, as well as again, looking at the freight industry in general. We lack freight towing. We lack freight mechanics. We lack a lot of jobs around, uh, renewable energy vehicles. Um, there really aren't any individuals who are very skilled in the county as a whole who can work on electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles as mechanics. And so, um, they, they had a really interesting conversation about that. Um, that did also come out in some of our workshopping and surveying, but it was pretty minor up until you get to that younger generation. So those who are twenty-five and younger, um, really focused on energy independence is another piece of it, is they want to be less reliant, um, on other energy methods outside of the area and wanted to see more investment in local energy production. And so energy options as well, they're really open to a lot of different items. Uh, again, talking about the efficiency of diesel motors versus unleaded motors occurred in a lot of the courses, um, the classes that we went to, which again is, is really fascinating to kind of have with younger people. They're very in tune. Um, it was really kind of a joy to engage them. And so, uh, the next one is kind of that priorities now than in later piece. And so this is kind of again, just a summarization of what people spoke about in the survey, the workshops and in the, uh, focus groups pieces. So for the short term, the priorities now that they're really focused on, uh, for the general public is housing affordability is like first and foremost what people think is an issue right now. Um, they feel that it needs to be addressed right now. It needs to be addressed within the next five years. Entertainment and social events is huge as well. A lot of people just want to see more opportunities to do something outside of the home, um, whether that even be in outdoor recreation, farmers markets, events, movie theaters, all of that fun stuff, the pool. Uh, again, going back to that daycare, childcare is again huge. A lot of people want to see more programming for kids, more outdoor recreation programs. You know, again, soccer camps, clubs, uh, mountain biking events, you know, things that are more geared towards youth, uh, in terms of being outside and being in the, uh, parks, facilities, as well as the community center and doing more of that childcare daycare piece. Um, and that came from some of the, um, working age group as well, that they just don't feel very well-supported. And I might be a little bit biased because I work in an office with everybody in this age demographic and I listen, uh, to all of the trials of the, um, school-aged children and having half-days and having not half-days and then having off and then not having off. Um, and just having to balance all of those pieces, there's, there's a huge gap within our services for people who are working, who have kids in the school system, who may not have as much flexibility to just go and pick up their kid, you know, when you have those, um, interesting school schedules. Um, so that's something that a lot of people have talked about now. The other one is good employment. Again, uh, a lot of people said good jobs. Um, I, in my profession, good jobs equates to median income or higher. It's, uh, good pay, but they're also really concerned about minimum wage and entry-level workers. So a lot of the high school students talked about having a job and trying to get a good job that pays enough for them to be able to go to school, be able to live on their own. Um, the ones going to college are very concerned about affording college as well as housing. And, uh, a lot of them did talk about getting a job to do that, um, just having better pay in general. Homeless shelter and mental health services is something people are asking for right now. Um, and that is not just the youth, but it's, uh, across the spectrum that came out in a lot of our workshopping with the housing element. It came out of the workshopping with, you know, the general plan and urban design is that just having somewhere besides the hill to send them. Um, it is a really sensitive thing for people. And then more retail options, uh, across the board, there's, it's probably like a seventy, thirty split that people want to see more locally-owned businesses in the restaurant and personal services area, but they want to see more corporations in the retail area. They want to see larger corporations come in, offer better shopping options for clothing, better shopping options for shoes. But then in terms of the other side of it is they want to see more support for small businesses in the restaurants and the personal services. So having like a, a massage therapist or things like that. So, uh, priorities in about ten years that people have prioritized is housing options. So again, people are concerned about affordability right now and then they're concerned about options in the future. And again, that goes back to the variety of housing types that people need as they age through life and where they see themselves in the future. Um, I would say the majority of the, the younger generation is pushing to own a home and have a single-family home. Um, but they are looking at smaller lots. I, a lot of them are concerned about financing. Um, and that's actually kind of indicative of that generation is that they're much more sensitive to debt. And so they are being actually very realistic in a lot of their answers. But a lot of them hope at least by ten years, they're out of, you know, high school or, you know, in the next ten years, they should be able to start being able to afford their own home. And so family-oriented events and activities again is a huge thing. A lot of people see themselves having children here in this community. They see the community supporting that. And so they just want to see more and more programming around family-oriented events and activities. More transportation options start to, to come up in the ten to twenty-year section. And again, that's walkability. Um, electric bikes are very popular. Um, electric scooters as well, having safe bike pathways came out as kind of the highest common themes within transportation. Um, when we get to the twenty-year out, the transportation starts to shift towards taxi services, um, special buses for people who are mobility-challenged because we do have a, a large sector of the aging population who, who are very concerned about their options for transportation in the next twenty years. Um, better education opportunities, pre-K through twelve, that seems to be a much more closer goal that people want to see as opposed to the continuing education. Again, it just came up a lot more in terms of like, we need to start thinking about this in the next year and really start for next ten years and start to really beef up what our pre-K through twelve is. Um, a lot of the seniors had, uh, negative things to say about their education and felt that it could be better and they could have better teachers. Uh, they thankfully did not personally name anyone, uh, but they, they, they wanted better education opportunities. They want better, uh, trades training as well in high school and they want more trades training in terms of summer programs. That came out in, one of the courses is one of the students, um, and a lot of them echoed what she had said is she had gone to a summer camp in Oregon to learn welding for the summer. And so she got an introduction to welding before her senior year of high school. She really liked it. She's going to the, uh, University of Utah or something like that, or Utah Technical, UTI, uh, Utah Technical Institute for Welding to become a welder. And so, um, they were asking for just better education opportunities for kids to explore some of those trades and to be able to work in that trade a little bit before they go off to, to their, their training schools. Um, a lot of people do want to get into forestry, law enforcement, and fire services. Um, that was also a, a pretty decent theme in terms of the education opportunities. Um that was also a a pretty decent theme in terms of the education opportunities. Um that they wanted to see and learn more about prior to, you know, going to college. Again. The younger generation is very focused on. Uh making the right decision because they feel if they invest too much money and collect too much debt, that it's going to be a bad thing for them. So they're trying to be very pragmatic about that. Um again, uh parents as well, uh going back to that education opportunity, peak pre K through twelve and being able to have better education opportunities for kids. Um tutoring services was something that came up as a minor theme. And then um again, having those summer type of camps or programs for kids to engage and enrich themselves in the education system. Healthcare options, again, it's coming out, uh they want more healthcare options ten years out, and then as we see the twenty year out, they're really focused. On the diversity of services, dialysis, physical therapists. Um people who are going to be able to help all of us live longer lives generally is is kind of what they're looking at, so wellness. Um local business development is something that people you'll start to see um a little bit farther out in terms of the priority. And then uh the youth would like to end homelessness in ten years, and so I thought that was a, you know what, you gotta put a goal somewhere for that. And so uh they really want to see pretty much nobody on the streets, they think it's a safety concern, um they don't want to see people who are not. Um housed in their community. Um and so that's kind of more of a middle term goal that they they had suggested, and again, it echoes the rest of what we hear in terms of. Making sure the parks are safe, making sure people are not illegally camping, they're not starting illegal forest fires. Uh or sorry, starting forest fires um and and doing those things, it's a big concern. And then twenty years out, the things that people have talked about, like we said, homeownership and options, again, we're starting to look at people want to have better financial services. So that came out echoing over all of the age demographics is more retirement planning support, financial planning support. Um having more access to resources to understand how to save uh for retirement or save for whatever they would like to do in the future. Uh purchasing a home, having some assistance to understand how to do that if your first time home buyer came out in a couple of pe- places. And then again, this continuing education, higher education, um there is a small theme of people wanting the College of the Siskies to. Advance and become a four-year UC school. Um that is a good twenty year goal to have, it's it's a very long process to do that, but if that's what people really want to look at doing. That that can be within the 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 goals, programs and policies of the general plan. And then finally, water security, um that's more of again, that comes up in the longer term goal section, but it is a is a common theme. Theme throughout all age demographics as well as um all of our other demographic hits. Next slide please. So we took all this and we condensed it down for you. Again, this is just a first draft to build off of the common themes and analysis. This is going to be an open discussion for all of you, you can hate it, you can love it, you can change it, it's really just what I'm trying to do is you have. Pretty much every possibility available to you, and so we're trying to narrow that for you to start to get down to a more concise vision statement. And so again, we keep in mind that we want it to be positive, we want it to be forward thinking, we want it to be aspirational. So again, um you know, we want to try and hit those things with this, and then the the asterisk is that again, we're still finishing the high school student data. And and the intergenerational workshop, but for the most part, a lot of these themes echo throughout most of the the input that we've gotten so far. Um and so finishing up that analysis, I don't expect this to change significantly, um if it was just based on the data analysis itself. Now again, you all can change it, this is open for discussion. Um and so if you want to do the next slide really quick and then we'll go back to this one and then you guys can talk about it. Um once we start to get a, once I get a good idea of the vision that you guys have, we're going to start giving you a list of guiding principles that we will echo. Throughout the full document, and so examples of guiding principles is business support, farming opportunities, energy independence, healthy communities. It can really be anything that you find is very important. So working with other communities, they wanted cutting edge innovative infrastructure, they wanted um recreational opportunities. Uh they wanted historic preservation, preservation, and so we have not drafted these for your consideration yet because I want to just have a conversation on the vision statement. Make sure we're on the right track and making sure that we're not going in a direction you don't want us to go for today. So if you could put it back to the last slide. Um we'll just open it up for your discussion and and Alia and I are just going to take notes and just listen as you guys go, and if you have any questions. Um about what we heard in public input, if you have a specific question, we can roll through that. Um my goal is, uh I have all of the raw data, so if you do want to read all of the raw data, we can give that to you um after the meeting.
I have a question on the priorities now and the priorities in ten years. Priorities now, you list housing affordability. Well, there's so little housing stock in the city. The ten years time. It's. I know. We're talking about various types of housing. But how do you see? This various types of housing being built before ten years?
Yeah, and so. The the purpose of that slide is just to kind of echo what we heard in the public outreach, but affordability, yes, it's. Increasing the number of housing units that we have, uh we do have goals within the housing element already to support a variety of housing types. And so we would, we would do that before ten years, but I was just kind of echoing where that kind of input came from in terms of when they were talking about, you know, five, ten, twenty years out. That's where those kind of themes really kind of leveled out for a lot of people here, but we would be simultaneously working on all of these things. As we went through the general plan process. So once you approve a general plan, what we do with that general plan is we come to you as planning commissioners, we go to the city council. And we go, okay, looking at your general plan and looking at the priorities that you've set us, you know, we think that we should work on these four priority areas. For the next two years. So for example, we don't really have a good guiding document right now, so the staff's priorities are housing, water security. Financial stability or financial resilience and fire mitigation, yeah, fire mitigation specifically. And then we have a fifth um kind of priority that will emerge, um and these are all set by the city manager and communicated to the city council right now. Um and then we have a a fifth goal coming out of for redevelopment activities. And so basically, this is the overarching document of what we want to do in twenty years. And then what we'll do is we'll take what we think is going to be feasible for the next two years as an action plan and bring it to you guys for approval. And city council approval as we work through the final plan. So that's kind of how these documents kind of cascade is that it'll have specifics in there, we will put timelines on each one and you'll have input into the final timeline. So if there are programs that you think should be prioritized sooner, um you can do that when we get to that portion. And so we're not setting any timing at this point, I just wanted to communicate how that input was rolling out and where those themes were coming from.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess I'm. I guess some comments, so the guiding uh your visioning statement?
Mm-hmm.
I. I like it. I support a hundred percent, I think you nailed it with that, so. There's nothing in there that I would object to or change at this point. Um as far as guiding principles, examples, one of them was business support. Um I'd like to see us pro development. Try to support developers uh as well as businesses uh and work to eliminate barriers to development.
And yeah, and when we bring those back, um so what you'll get for the guiding principles is you'll get a title, we usually have an icon with it because it's easy to go through the general plan. And be able to say, okay, this program is going to go to this principle, so we can link it all back. Um but what we will do is we'll have kind of a little narrative to that, so. The big thing with this is again, we want it to be super clear, because I may not be here in twenty years, but this is still your statement for the city that the planning department. The public works department needs to understand and needs to be very clear about, so the guiding principles give us a little bit more leeway than the statement. To be very specific about that and go, okay, for business support, like for example, what kind of businesses? Like I said, we kind of talk about a mix of, do you want corporate, do you want local, do you want expansion, attraction, you know, those are things we can talk about more later too.
Yeah, so I I look at those, those things are kind of things like the marketplace works that out, right? I mean, if it's, if it's affordable for a corporation to relocate to Wairika because there's a benefit, then we'll probably get that. I mean, but what, what is, what are we going to develop and what businesses are going to come in here and develop anything right now? I mean, the travel center, I think that's great. You know, it's hospital expansion, NorCal expansion and housing, but if if we don't eliminate some of the barriers to actually make these projects go. And I know a lot of it is dictated by what the state regulations are, but. Um I think as a community. I don't want to see Wairika stay at seventy-five hundred people because it's not going to survive with seventy-five hundred people, and we need to grow. But we have to, I want to support that group and part of that, personally, having seen it, I'm trying to develop here, it's hard to do. But if we can su- you know, have a vision like we're going to support the development, I would like that as part of our vision.
And I will say probably the vast majority of the input that we got throughout the whole process is very pro-growth. There is a minority of people who do not want the city to grow, but I would say probably about ninety-five percent of the responses that did discuss growth. Were pro-growth and did want to see a lot more. Um if you go to the youth demographic, nearly all of them wanted to see that. Um there were a couple of of items in discussion with the the younger focus group participants about what does it mean to be a small town? And what do you want to keep? And a lot of it had to do with maintaining hunting and fishing ability, uh maintenance of the natural resources for outdoor recreation. And so we kind of whittled that down. Um the small town thing is really fascinating because once we got out of the visioning survey. And we started talking about small town rural and things like that, you really didn't hear a lot of that in the workshopping or the focus groups. It was really just focused on, um farming did come out a lot, supporting local agriculture came out a lot. But other than that, um there was some ranching discussions as well and supporting the ranches. Um but it's really interesting, you don't have any ranches actually in Wairika.
I was going to say, that's more regional, that's the seven square miles of Wairika, you can only have limited breeding opportunity and.
Yeah. But I will say, just based off of the developers that we're talking to now, the the city of Wairika has a large amount of manufacturing zones. Um especially out on Philippi Lane that are becoming more and more attractive to the ranching community because we are a closer facility than. Shipping their things down to Los Angeles, and so there are some synergistic pieces to supporting the regional agriculture of of specifically ranching. Is is what, um by having some of these complimentary uses, and then we've also had more interest in farm worker housing in Wairika. Where they want to have the farm workers live here seasonally and then they will bus them to the facilities. And so there are ways that we can support that piece, but that's really kind of what came out of that rural discussion is that people are less. Enamored with small as in small scale and in terms of small being connected to the community. I think that's really what came out of what small town means for a lot of people is that cherishing social engagement, having these events. Knowing your neighbors, you know, having this sense of closeness. And so I I think that really kind of came out really well, and that was kind of generally the input that we saw, so. Yeah.
Those are all my comments.
Um. Along with healthcare, I would really like to add veterinarian care because we don't have emergency vets, you gotta go to Oregon in the middle of winter, you cannot get there. So we really need to, it used to be when I was a kid, all the vets would. Would help each other out with the weekend, you know, or after closing, but not no more, they don't even talk to each other anymore. So we really need to work on that better.
So it sounds like um. A lot of the this, the information in this preparation was gathered at the May. Um the May community meeting where the students attended and I thought that that was fantastic, how the kids participated. I. I was able to sit at a table with the mayor and Dwayne Cag. And the rest were parents and one, or one one parent and the rest were kids. And the kids talked about the overwhelming need for mental health services and so many times that's lumped in with homelessness. But from their perspective, it wasn't about homelessness, it was about the need for mental health services period. And when you looked at the. The percentages of the younger population that were was in need of mental health services, it was overwhelming. I could not believe how many kids. Or or young adults um were in need of mental health services, and so I think that we really need to focus on not necessarily lumping it in. With the homelessness pop issue, but really mental health ish uh services in general, so that they're more far reaching to people. Who don't necessarily have that, that housing need.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I would agree with that, moving the bullet point over, because on here where it's homeless shelter and mental health. The folk, the folks that are on the hill are going to be the last people that are asking for mental health services or are willing to go to a shelter. They absolutely refuse.
Yeah, they won't go across the street.
Right.
To ask for help, literally.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, it's a county problem that should be taken care of, but but none of them qualify for.
Very good, I agree.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very good point, like I said, they were very attuned to that, um they were talking about social engagement as well and just having. More things to do to connect with each other and connect with other people. Um you know, a- and again, going back to the survey data as well, is the survey data, I think, was good in terms of like, it was pointing us in that greater direction. Of like asking for more events, people really want bringing pool back, which. I I mean, we can announce that we do have an architect on contract who is actually working on the re-renovation redevelopment to bring you pool right now. Um and so it was just, it's a lot of things to do and people to see, and that was kind of part of that mental health piece for them is. It's just about connecting, and then the other thing too is just having available therapists, you know, in the area that you can physically go and see. I think that's a, that was something that people had talked about as well, not even just the youth, but just people in general, you don't have a ton of available healthcare professionals. Including those mental health professionals.
There you, there's funding too, because the county is limited as to what they can dedicate to behavioral health.
Behavioral health gets the majority of the budget, and they do about the least amount of services. I know we refer people to them all the time that they do not. Or will not help.
Wow, that's too bad.
Another thing you mentioned, Julia, was the expansion of health services, so people don't have to drive over the pass to Medford. And I, I was a recipient of that same thing, there are no experts at Fairchild. There are very few experts, shall we say, so you're, you have to go to Medford. So that would be.
Well, they have a big, they have a big expansion plan. They do, we just need to support it.
Yes, right. It is so hard um as just a regular person to find a primary care provider. And especially as a challenging, especially for a lady.
All of Siski County, if you are a lady and you need lady healthcare, good luck.
Good luck with that, so. Right, so, so anyway, yes, let's, I I agree with that need for for increased medical services. So I think that um, do you need any kind of action? Because I I think that we all agree with um so much of the information that's in here and there. Like, like Brian said, I don't, I don't disagree with anything.
Okay. Yeah, if, I mean, if you guys are comfortable with it, I mean, I did not intend for you to approve it today, but if you're comfortable with it as it's written, you could. You can motion to approve it for city council consideration. Uh I think you probably should open it up for public comment though.
What?
Yes, um any public comments?
And we can bring the guiding principles back to you before they go to them as well, so.
Yeah, Lorenzo Love. Uh housing is the base of all this. I mean, you want Fairchild to expand, they don't have any place for their doctors to live. You want Bifer to expand, they don't have any place for their skilled workers to live. You want to bring in new business, where are the people going to live? Housing is the very base level for any improvement in this town. If there's no housing, nothing else happens. So that's the first thing you got to work on.
Thank you. My two.
I think it's kind of the, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Because I think what we all want is the services available, but we don't have the people. We don't have the money, we don't, it, it, the housing. Um yes, we, what we want is the um services of a larger community. And I agree with what she said, but with a sense of community.
Hi, I'm Yolanda O'Brien.
Hi, I'm Yolanda O'Brien. Yeah, I'm married to him. Um. Behavior health, I used to be on the advisory board. A while back for the county on that. One of the problems with behavioral health is they don't even have enough funds to provide enough service providers. They need more therapists. They need, uh, more people who can go out into the community. Because, um, especially during the pandemic, everything became Zoom. Or they just didn't have folks. And a lot of the service providers will, will sign up, be there for a couple of years, get burned out and leave. Um, so that's, that's a really big problem. Now, their budget is by the county. But they have a lot of grant entitled money, but those monies can only be used for certain items. And they can't put them into the general fund for behavioral health. So that's one of their problems. Yes, um, we need more mental health across the board, absolutely across the board. We also need more, uh, medical services. I was referred to a nutritionist. Um, for a chronic problem and there isn't one in anywhere in Siski County that I can see. So they referred me to Oregon and I don't qualify under the Oregon rules. For my Medicare and my supplemental health insurance to cover it. So for me to see a nutritionist would be five hundred and forty-nine dollars an hour, which of course I'm not gonna do. In, um. Oregon. So now I'm thinking I'm gonna have to look for one that I can do tele. In Reading, which is the closest, largest, larger referral section. But, and hopefully insurance covers it, because if insurance doesn't cover it, I can't afford five hundred and some dollars. An hour. And I know that this is something I'm gonna need for off and on for quite a bit. And, um, so, so I, I'm granted, I'm part of the older generation causing problems, but that's all right. And I, but I see with my family, my son, who has a good job, struggling. To save the money so he can afford to buy a house. That right now, there just isn't housing to buy. I mean, if you make good money, you can buy houses here in Siski County, no problem. But if you're. Um, got a, you know, a younger family and you're younger and you're in that area. You're, you're, you're out of the housing problem. And again, housing is, I agree with the gentleman, just it, it supports everything.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
And to go back to, to Anne's, uh, kinda conversation about chicken and egg piece. So from the community development standpoint, it's really not a chicken and the egg for us. We basically, what we do, kinda going back to setting those priorities, is we tackle all of it at the same time. Um, and we take small programs within each sector and we start to chip away at it. And so for example, we're working with developers right now to develop more jobs. We're working with housing developers to develop more housing, you know, again, across the board income level, not just, you know, the lower income. And so as we move forward with this, again, the general plan sets us up for twenty years. But then you all help us set the priorities and go, okay, this is what we need to hit this year. This is what we need to hit next year. And then we start to do that. And so another example of that is our contractors who support us. Um, you know, we just met with housing tools yesterday to start setting priorities for next calendar year. On what we'd like them to work on for our housing programs that are in our adopted housing element. And so again, that's. It's not something the city of Wyreka has done historically, but that's how this is supposed to work, is you give us a big laundry list. And then we go, okay, do you wanna do the socks first or the pants? And then we start to chip away at all of this as we continue to respond to other things that come through the day to day. So I appreciate the conversation, um, and, uh, yeah, it's, I think you'd like to.
I think we recognize that housing is one of the, the foundational principles that we need to focus on, but I'm not. I'm not willing to not try to focus on other things without, I mean. I feel like we can focus it on, all of it at the same time. I'm not interested in just focusing on housing. Before we talk about increased medical services, increased mental health services. Um, so I would, I would just note that we have, I mean, housing is at the top on all of our priorities over the next twenty years. Um, so I would, I would just be willing to motion to adopt this. But with the bifurcation of the homeless and mental health.
Yeah, we'll bring you back the guiding principles that'll divide that out a little bit better for you. There is a motion.
There is a motion. There is. Recommended Planning Commission Action Discussions and Direction to Start. On Draft Vision and Statement and Guiding Principles. Is that a motion?
So I believe Annie made the motion to adopt, to adopt this vision statement and send it to the city council.
I second, I second the motion.
Right.
Right.
I.
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 All right, so we'll bring the, uh, guiding principles back to you, probably, um, what we'll talk about next meeting, but that's pretty much the item for today. Um, I think I was just gonna make one other comment for our agenda today, is just taking the availability for the next meeting. Um, so our next meeting is scheduled for December twentieth. That is right before the holidays. We did not choose to remove it from the schedule, but I just wanted to take a poll of the commissioners now. Um, are you available? Would you like to have that meeting? I don't expect any applications to come in for a public hearing. Um, before then, we do have a couple that will be coming up in the next couple of months. Um, not like the Wyreka Travel Center, a little bit more manageable than that, but, um. Yeah, um, so are you all, would you like to cancel that meeting or would you like to hold that meeting?
Well, sure, huh?
I wanna hold it. I mean, I, I filled out the application to be here every single month, once a month. I wanna be here.
But do we have any urgent?
No.
Items that need to be attended to?
No, we do not have anything that's urgent that needs to happen at that meeting. So we could wait for the guiding principles to do in your first meeting in January, along with a couple of other items that we normally do at the January meeting.
So I would say I'm available, but like Anne said. A meeting like this isn't necessarily. It's an, it's not a necessity to do five days before Christmas. Certainly I'm available, but think about all of these, the other people who are also needing to be here. You know, the city staff, when they could be, you know. When it's not a necessary meeting. We don't have a public hearing to hold. So if there's nothing pressing. My recommendation is that we move things to January.
Yeah, and maybe Don Marie, you and I can meet, cause, uh, I know you haven't been here with this group for some of the trainings. And so maybe you and I can set up a training, you know, in December and, and focus our time on that, if that works for you.
That is fine.
I'm good postponed jump.
So we will, we will cancel it. Yeah, we will cancel.
There's gonna be three feet of snow anyway, so.
Yeah, we, we might all be stuck in our respective areas that we've discovered. So we'll be, we'll be bringing, uh, this item back to you with the guiding principles, so we can kinda discuss those and make sure those are okay. And then I believe our next element that we've, uh, started and we're working on, um, will be probably around safety. Let's talk about hazards.
Right.
Yes. Thank you.
Nothing?
Good job.
Thank you.
So we will meet January seventeenth will be our next meeting.
Twenty twenty-four.